Kia ora koutou, welcome to this meeting of the Community and Culture Committee. Seven minutes after nine, for those of you who have joined us for the first time, it's always this smoothly run, so thank you for your patience. Yesterday was International Children's Day, a UNICEF initiative celebrating the role and the importance of younger people in our community and in our decision-making. And seeing as we don't have any young people on the council, we had to import one. So I'd like to welcome, to formally open proceedings this morning, George Sabonadiere, who's currently the Chair of the Dunedin Youth Council. Welcome.
Thank you, Aaron. Tēnā koutou, tēnā koutou, tēnā koutou. I'm George Sabonadiere, as Aaron introduced me, the Chair of the Dunedin Youth Council. Now, I want to begin today by thanking you for inviting me to come and speak to you. Although with less than 24 hours' notice and an exam in several hours, I had little opportunity to prepare my remarks, but I'm going to attempt, despite that, to summarise what it is that the Dunedin Youth Council does, and what it is that we'd like to be doing in the next year, and ultimately how you tie into that as council. So, it's not very often that I have the opportunity to try and represent accurately the voices of every young person in Dunedin. And indeed, I don't believe that I have the ability to do that, but what I can do is speak for the Dunedin Youth Council, where we're a representative body of young people, and ideally, an accurate cross-section of youth in the city. Now, I've been the Chair for only a matter of months now, but it's been a great experience so far, and I've been on the Youth Council for roughly a year so far. So, over that year, my interpretation would be that the Youth Council, in many senses, has not been overly successful in achieving its aims, which are to engage with council and provide a youth voice to council decision-making, and secondly, to make Dunedin a better city for youth. I think that this is largely down to a lack of communication between the Youth Council and the Dunedin City Council, which is why this is such a good opportunity, and hopefully something that can carry on in future. However, looking to the future, over the next year, I'm highly optimistic at the Youth Council's ability to fulfil those goals. We've got a broad array of events planned for next year to try and engage youth innovation and youth engagement with community, as well as environmental development for community groups and schools. As well as that, the Dunedin Youth Council is at the forefront of the establishment of the Association of Youth Council Organisations of New Zealand, a new initiative to act as a representative or governing body of youth councils in the country. So, the Dunedin Youth Council and young people in Dunedin are leaders at a local, national and international level, in a number of ways. So, my main goal, and the Youth Council's main goal, is to facilitate these young people, not to act entirely independently as a body that goes out and does everything that we want to do, but to actually reach out to the community and see how we can help, how we can facilitate what young people are doing. Youth have one great thing on their side, and that's a lot of innovation, a lot of motivation, a lot of passion. One thing that we're missing, however, is experience. And I would say that I probably have more governance experience than the average young person, and yet I make big mistakes all the time, just ask Rema, he'll give you a long list, I give him a headache all the time. But that's where I'd love to continue a relationship and build on a relationship with council, so we can draw on your experience, your ideas, your money and power, to try and implement our goals, and to make Dunedin a better city, not just for youth, but for all Dunedons. Kia ora.
Thanks, George. You can leave, if you like. Are you happy to answer questions if anybody has any?
Definitely, yeah.
Any questions, councilors? councillor Gary?
First of all, congratulations, George, and it's delightful to see you here today. It's fantastic. I just wondered about the timing of that national body, because that's obviously fairly pivotal to establishing yourselves in that area.
Could you clarify what your question?
Do you have any sense of a timing for establishing that national body?
Yeah, so we're planning an inaugural hui in January next year, so that would be the 20th to the 21st is when we're going for, to establish the organisation and set a pathway ahead. So ideally, a national executive will be elected and meet roughly four times a year.
And is there anything else specifically in the short term that we can do as councillors to encourage you or to support you in your goals?
I think the main thing is fulfilling one of our two goals, which is providing that youth voice to local government, or specifically to the council. And so, the main thing is just establishing relationships which haven't been there in the past. So we'll be electing two liaisons at our AGM in January, and their purpose will be to establish relationships with councillors and with personnel from various parts of the council, so that when it comes to things, for example, the 10-year plan coming up, and any other plans that are going to affect young people in the long term, which is most of them, I'd say, all of them, that we would like to have input in that process. So, on the part of council, that's the main thing, is engaging us in those processes.
Councillor Benson-Pope?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. It's really following on from that. Obviously, you've got some plans for the future in terms of those contacts, but are you comfortable at the moment with the relationship, the networks you might have established? So, clearly you're talking to the chairman, or you wouldn't be here. Have you got wider contacts with elected members or other members of the administration at this point?
No, that's something that I see as probably the largest concern, and as I came in as Chair, that was my main goal, was to build those networks, because at the moment, to answer your question, no, they don't exist. Beyond a few close contacts within council, a few people who we've had lasting relationships with, and since the previous Youth Council, but as for wider communication, wider relationships, they're not in place. And I would say that, you know, the majority of people around this table haven't talked to us, and we haven't initiated that. No fault of your own, because that's our job to pursue that and to advocate for those interests. So that's my main goal.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Councillor Alder?
Thank you very much. All the best for your exam. I was just wondering if there is, and I'd like to refer to Joy on this as well, any way that you can report back on your meetings, so that they are reported back through the Community and Culture reports?
Yeah, that's a great idea, actually. I think probably the best way, just off the top of my head, to do that would be to produce a report, you know, at whatever period, you know, monthly or biannually, whatever it would be, to keep you updated on that. Because trawling through our meeting minutes is probably not the most efficient way to do that. You get a lot of fluff and not a lot of substance, so yeah, I'm sure we could produce a report.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Thank you.
Not like the minutes of these meetings. And we will endeavour to work with staff to make sure that there is a more regular reporting line through this committee for the Youth Council. That's a fine suggestion. Any other questions? No? Well, thank you, George, for coming along, I really appreciate it, and thank you for your fine presentation, no doubt not the last we'll see of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, good luck. We have two items on the public forum before we begin, and firstly, I'd like to welcome Nick Dempster, who is President of the Otago Art Society, and he's brought some pamphlets that Ms Lapham is now distributing to illustrate his talk, the next five minutes are all yours, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I feel a bit overwhelmed following that wonderful oration without even looking at notes, so please forgive me. My aim today is to update you on what the OAS has been doing over the last few years, changes that are underway, exciting events that we have planned, and our hopes for the future. I would like to start by thanking the DCC for their continued financial support of the society through the property agreement grant and rates relief. Both allow us to continue our tenancy of the Dunedin Railway Station, which has become integral to our ability to remain operating in such an important building in the centre of the city. By being located in this historic venue, open seven days a week, we continue to be the first port of call for many visitors to the city, and we are inundated during the cruise ship season. Last year saw almost 140,000 people through our front doors. Our staff and volunteers not only do a wonderful job for the society, but they also promote the city, provide information for other arts and cultural organisations, and offer recommendations based on their knowledge and experience. Along with the challenges of running the society on a day-to-day basis, the council has been busy finding ways to adopt to changes within the arts community, as well as implementing aspects of the DCC's Aretui culture and arts and culture strategy. The OAS of today is far removed from the OAS of, say, six years ago. We have almost completely refreshed the council of 16 energetic and enthusiastic individuals who are backed up by 80 or so devoted volunteers from our 700-strong membership, all of whom give the society almost 12,000 hours per year of their time in service, free of charge. Under the last presidency, and my own, there has been the beginning of a sea change in culture and outlook, a more professional, inclusive, and outward-looking approach that is designed to shake off perceptions and reputations that we have possibly earned over the past decades. We are currently in the process of changing our membership procedures to become more inclusive of all artists in art practice. We are duty-bound to be fully representative of the whole community, from academically-trained professionals to self-taught outsider artists, amateur watercolourists, to gritty graffiti artists. We, as an arts society, need to show that we welcome every one of the thousands of unique art practitioners within the community. By instilling a culture of friendship and acceptance, we begin to lay the groundwork for our survival in the 21st century. These changes in procedures require changes to our constitution, which members will be voting on early in the new year in a special general meeting. In the meantime, we continue to strive to form stronger working relationships with organisations such as the Dunedin Public Art Gallery Society, Otago Decorative and Fine Arts Society, the Otago University, the Art School, Friendslink Connections Art Centre, the Castleberg Trust, the Hopkin Library, local commercial galleries, the Potters Group, and other regional arts societies, and many more, to help reinforce our goals and reaffirm the benefits of this new path that we are on. Our exhibitions continue to grow in size, which speaks to the health of the society, and we now have members from Auckland to Invicagal. These increases have meant that we have recently had to hire another part-time assistant to aid our administrator in the office. We are increasingly finding ourselves being placed in a mentoring role, with our members looking for advice on how to market themselves, approach galleries, price their work, to guiding them through running their first solo shows. 2017 saw us reinstate the Cleveland National Art Awards, participate in the inaugural Dunedin Art Show, invest in producing an OAS calendar as a fundraiser, and had our very first Otago University intern student. In 2018, we will be participating in the Dunedin Fringe Festival for the first time, and helping the Otago University press celebrate the digitisation of the Landfall Journal in May, with a joint exhibition incorporating literature and art. Another joint show with the Otago Potters Association in late November will, we hope, become a template for future collaborations with other organisations. All this will be done while still hosting our full calendar of regular exhibitions, as well as hosting Hope &amp; Sons and the Edinburgh Realty Art Awards. Also amongst this, we will have our annual youth art awards. This event encourages kids aged 5 to 16 to engage in art and continues to grow in popularity and participation. Last year, we celebrated our 140th anniversary, and local artist in Gdodosberg discussed this with Rebecca Fox in the OTT, and I'd just like to finish on her quote, because she says it much more eloquently than I could. To my mind, it makes the society one of the most important art organisations in the country. It is of historic importance in that it has encouraged and fostered discernment and appreciation in the making and viewing of art with varying focal points over time. There seems to be fresh viewpoints emerging and new directions in the current leadership. I view it as a means to encourage all manner of art activities, community, engage, exchange, and learning in the varied and active and lively art world that is and always has been important to Dunedin. The location of the society at the Dunedin Railway Station is an inspired situation. It combines the symbolism of tradition, moving forward, as well as appreciating where it stands right now. And that should be five minutes, I think.
Indeed. Thanks, Nick. Councillor Benson-Pope?
Thanks for your comments, and thanks for the work you're doing. Just following on that last point, about the historic importance of the building and so on, you've obviously been a great tenant, as in one of the anchor tenants, for a considerable time.
Yes.
Are there any issues? I'm not asking if we've put the rent up too much, but are there any issues in terms of the size of the space that affect your occupancy?
Our shows are increasing in number, and it is getting difficult to hang the amount of works that we're doing. We are sort of at a point now where storage is becoming an issue, but we are looking at ways of managing that. We've still got some space to move into. Ceilings are very high.
Thank you. Councillor Gary?
Thank you for your presentation, Nick, and all the work that you've been doing in refreshing the society. I'm interested to know what this council can do to support you going forward. Is there anything specific in the short term, medium term?
Well, we struggle with strategic planning, we just, we struggle to find the time to focus on a five-year plan, a 10-year plan, purely because we're so involved in the day-to-day running. I think, too, that being down at the railway station, even though it is part of the heritage circle, we do feel isolated at times, and sort of not set adrift, but I think communication is key in making sure that we feel supported, and that we can support what the DCC are doing as well.
So, are you talking about having one person to deal with? Because obviously, organisations often have to talk to different people within council for different purposes. Is that about having a key person to talk to?
Well, I guess so. It's just more being kept informed, or both parties being... Yeah, the free flow of information, I think, is key to making sure that we're both on this, both groups are on the same page.
Councillor Alder?
I was just wondering, given that you look like you're thriving in some ways...
In some ways, yeah.
I was just wondering what kind of returns you're getting in the sense of, you know, sales and stuff like that?
Yeah, well, we are a non-profit organisation, so we're not designed to make a profit. Last year, we only made a profit of $8,000.
Yes.
And the year before that, it was $10,000. The previous three or four years, we actually ran at a loss, a significant loss. So, we had to turn that around, and that's purely through sales and getting people through the door and looking at the artwork and buying it. That's why the Cleveland Art Awards were so important to us, because those big tent pole exhibitions are very important to us to gather revenue, so we can make sure that we're paying our staff and continue to develop the society moving forward, especially as costs mount with advertising, promotion, and anything else that may crop up.
I've used the Arts Society before for selling stuff, and found it very accessible. Can you explain how much it costs for a young artist, or any aged artist for that matter, to display their works there?
Well, if they want to display their work there, they can join the Arts Society for $50 an annual subscription, and they get the chance to put their work up on the wall.
Which is amazing, really.
Yeah, yeah. We are one of the cheapest arts societies in the country. We just actually increased our subs from $40 to $50 just recently, which was long overdue, and we probably will, maybe in the next three or four years, look at having to increase that again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Nick, for you and your work, and all that the society does as part of our arts infrastructure, appreciate that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Brittany Beavis, from Wales South, speaking on behalf of the Dunedin Breastfeeding Network. Welcome. There are supporting documents now being distributed also.
Tēnā koutou, kātua. Ngā mihino ikiia koutou, kātua. Ngā te rau kāua te ēwek, ngā te pari rau kāua te hapu. Ngā tāna tōkuwaru te marae. Nor Wales South, tōku mahi. Nor Levenahoe, call Brittany tōku inga. Kia ora. Everyone, I am Brittany, and I'm from Wales South, and I'm represented here with the Dunedin Breastfeeding Network. This is only some of our multitude of people, so we've got, I'll just do a wee introduction. So, we've got Sarah Murray, who is an MSC student in nutrition. We've got Lydia and Logan, who is a new mum, who's 15 weeks old? Yes, so Logan's 15 weeks. And we've got Alison, and she's an ELSI at Southern District Health Board. We've got Jo, Debbie, and Anna, who are all from Public Health South. We've Katiya from Heart Foundation. We've got Anne from La Lecche League, and we've got Christine from Public Health South. So, thank you so much for allowing us to come and speak with you in response to the submission Wales South made to the 2017 and 18 annual plan. So, the Dunedin Breastfeeding Network is a collaborative group of health and social services, including Wales South, La Lecche League, The Breast Room, lactation consultants, Public Health South, and the Heart Foundation. And we had to ask you today for a commitment by the DCC to work towards a family-friendly Dunedin, including the normalisation of breastfeeding, and a dedicated person in the council to work with to achieve this. So, breastfeeding is a normal way to feed a baby, and has many health benefits, not only for baby, but for mum as well. So, there's protecting the mother from breast and ovarian cancer, protecting the baby from obesity, sudden unexpected death in infancy or Sudi, and respiratory infections. And breastfeeding also has economic and community benefits, including smarter employees, a productive workforce, supports disaster preparedness, and there's no unnecessary cost spent on artificial formula. So, international guidelines recommend exclusive breastfeeding, so that's solely breastmilk and prescribed medicines, for up to six months of age. So, the southern region is doing really, really well at discharge, with about 87% of mothers exclusively breastfeeding. However, once they go into the community, the rates drop dramatically by about 30%. So, we don't wish to dwell on the negatives, and so there are lots of things happening in Dunedin to support breastfeeding. So, there's La Lecche League support groups, The Breast Room, which is a drop-in, a free drop-in centre down at the Early Years Hub, Wales South Breastfeeding Peer Supporters, and Wales South and Public Health South's BURP app, which shows women in whanau venues such as cafes, museums, and parks where they're supported to breastfeed in Otago and Southland. However, these resources aren't being fully utilised. And Dunedin mothers are reporting experiencing negative attitudes to breastfeeding in public, as well as a lack of support to breastfeed in their employment. So, when we look at the bigger picture, what is the DCC doing to support breastfeeding? Well, first and foremost, 56% of DCC facilities are breastfeeding-friendly and are on our BURP app. The Enterprise Dunedin website even has a direct link to the BURP app, which is great. Currently, there's no DCC workplace breastfeeding policy for employees, however, we understand that you guys are considering implementing one, so that's fantastic. There's also no breastfeeding public policy, so we do have some areas for improvement. So, all in all, how would you guys benefit from supporting breastfeeding? So, by supporting breastfeeding in Dunedin, the council will be able to meet its strategic directions of connected people and healthy and safe people in the Dunedin Social Wellbeing Strategy and the Spatial Plan for Dunedin 2012. Breastfeeding also supports food security, as if a baby is exclusively breastfed, then exclusively breastfed, they're food secure between birth and six months. Therefore, by supporting breastfeeding, the DCC can meet its aims detailed in the Food Resilience section of the Energy Plan 1.0. So, to conclude, the Dunedin Breastfeeding Network are asking you today for a commitment by the DCC to work towards a family-friendly Dunedin, including normalisation of breastfeeding, and a dedicated person in the council to work with to achieve this. So, thank you for inviting and listening to us this morning. Heata te miinui, o te ao. Heata ngata, heata ngata, heata ngata. Kia ora.
Kia ora, thanks, Brittany. You happy to take questions?
Me and the network.
A plethora of expertise available to help answer them.
Yes.
Councillor O'Malley?
Thanks very much for your presentation, and I really support breastfeeding myself. In fact, I was breastfeeding, all my children were, and I do think that all the health benefits you're talking about are definitely there. I would also agree that New Zealand still has a certain distance to go in terms of establishing proper breastfeeding environment and the normalisation of it. To that extent, when we go forward in developing policies, there's nothing better than the users to help and assist with that policy development. So, if we do go forward, which I hope we do, would you be willing, and obviously, to help us with our design as we go forward with these policies?
Yes, definitely. I mean, not only Wales South, but the whole Dunedin Breastfeeding Network would be more than happy to help with implementation and writing of a policy.
Thanks.
Councillor Gary?
First of all, I'd like to congratulate you for the work that you've done, and to thank all of the people who have come to support you this morning. And I have a question coming out of this, but I want to acknowledge my La Lecche leader, Anne Deveraux, who is in the public gallery today, and I know has a vast experience that will be able to answer this question. I'm interested to know from you, Anne, what has been the progress around normalising breastfeeding, because I think it's very easy to assume that all is fine, and it's quite easy to breastfeed in public, but I note from my conversations that, in fact, and discussions, that perhaps there are more obstacles than we casually imagine. So, would you like to speak to that and come up to the microphone, feel free? Because you've seen the changes over many years through vast experience.
Well, I think the main thing is that while breastfeeding is a biological norm, it hasn't been a cultural norm, probably for at least three generations. So, I don't use the word "social engineering" lightly, but it's a matter of taking very small steps and hopefully creating results. So, the things I've seen, I mean, I've been involved in counselling for 45 years, and the main thing is now, is young mothers going back to work very quickly after their babies are born, and often into work where they don't have opportunities to have their babies with them, or can leave to have their babies brought to them. So, often in hospitality, so very young mothers, working in quite challenging situations. The other thing is that many mothers have unrealistic expectations of what it is to be a mother, and particularly as far as breastfeeding is concerned. I think they feel that breastfeeding is like formula feeding, you're on a schedule, and your baby sleeps all night, where we know that babies don't do things, they don't have bath. So, I think a lot of it is exposing mothers now, before they have their babies, to the real reality of what it's like to have a baby. And ideally, if every mother who's having her first baby could be part of a group of mothers, and says she can absorb by osmosis what mothers are doing with their babies, I think that's one of the biggest steps. And I think all the research shows that mothers who see mothers breastfeeding, whether it's in public, informally, or in a support group, before they have their baby, breastfeed much longer.
Thank you, Anne. So, you're looking for some leadership from us in terms of a policy that will make it more normal?
Well, I suppose if one has a vision, I'd love Dunedin to be a breastfeeding-friendly city, but that's a long, long way down the track. But we already started. And talking to mothers, they're full of enthusiasm for the museum in Toitu, which has baby-friendly areas, and for a playground in Moas Gill, which has a fenced-off area where mothers can feed their babies and still watch their preschoolers at the playground. So, it's little things like that which... So it's little things like that which make a huge difference. And the other thing is that breastfeeding, when you're, if none of your family has breastfed, that nobody in the family can ever remember seeing anyone breastfeeding, a mother who decides to breastfeed has a huge battle, just not wanting to offend family, not wanting to break family traditions and not having anyone that she can turn to and say, what was it like this for you when you had me? So, you know, it's those subtle things that make all the difference for a mother.
And I think we've come a long way, haven't we now, we see in parliament? And I can think of a colleague around the table who led the way for me when I had my baby, so.
Thank you. Councillor Alder?
I was just wondering what kind of levers we can pull to change public perception and what ideas you've got around there? Around breastfeeding in public?
Yeah, I think when it comes to breastfeeding in public, it is going to be like a long road. It doesn't, it does take generations to sort of build that. But for example, with our BURP app, restaurants and museums and stuff are encouraged to put up the international symbol for breastfeeding friendly and so women then know that they can breastfeed there, but it also shows the public that the woman can breastfeed there. And so it's much like the smoke-free signs that you see all around, that not only the people who are smokers, it's the people who are non-smokers see that that is smoke-free. And so even something as simple as, you know, the breastfeeding signage, you know, that goes up and it could go alongside the smoke-free signage around parks and playgrounds and bus stops. And it just puts it out there that, you know, it is okay and it does, it gives women sort of a back to say if someone comes up to them, they can say, well, actually, I can breastfeed here, the sign says so. And it gives them a little bit more empowerment.
Further questions? There's a fantastic woman in my antenatal class who insisted on only breastfeeding at places that weren't on the BURP app as a form of activism, which was amazing. But thank you for your presentation and thank you all for coming along in support of... Councillor Newell?
Thank you, sorry to interrupt. Congratulations, all of you. I think it's the most normal thing on the planet and I think we are getting there, but it's a very, very slow process. Just wondering, the banning, obviously we want to get breastfeeding in as many public places as we possibly can, would the banning of smoking in said places also be fortuitous and helpful?
Yes, is the short answer. I think, you know, it would be fantastic if we had, you know, smoke-free outdoor spaces so that women can then feel that they can, you know, breastfeed in a safe environment. And I think, yeah, you're definitely correct that it would definitely help, yeah.
That symbiotic relationship is a perfect segue into the Smoke Free Coalition, who I believe will be appearing at a public forum before our next full council meeting on the 28th of November to update us on the work that they're doing. But before I... No, no further questions. Thanks for coming along and we'll be in touch to progress this work in due course. So thank you for joining us this morning.
Thank you.